Okay, welcome everybody. Thank you. All right, welcome. Today is Tuesday, April 24th. This is a special meeting of the City Council. It's a study session. And the study session is for review and status update of the ongoing general plan, local coastal plan, and zoning code update. This is an opportunity for Council to get an update on the timeline, the process, and maybe what we're up against as far as all the documents that'll be coming forward. So looking forward to that. For the record, we do have a quorum. All members of Council are present, and we'll call the meeting to order. And at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. For anybody who'd like to speak to public comment at this time, seeing none, I'll close it at this time, and I'm sure we can go through it. And if we have time during the end, we can open up for public comment at that. And Scott, are you going to lead us off on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Irons, members of Council. As was indicated, we have a review, overview of kind of why we're here, what we're doing, where we're at, all those types of things. Included in your packet in the staff report was fairly brief, and then there was the PowerPoint presentation. We have the timeline that's in there, so you can look through that. It gives you kind of an idea, showing us going down to the endpoint in September. Hopefully, we stick to that timeline. We have, as part of the presentation, will kind of walk you through where we've been, where we are now, and where we're going, and give the opportunity for the Council to have a discussion both amongst yourselves and with staff about how we bring items forward to you moving forward. With that, I'll turn it over to Amy with Michael Baker, and she can start off the presentation. Amy?
Great, thanks Scott.
Thanks, slide.
Welcome, Amy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the Council. Nice to be back. As I was preparing, I realized that we had our last study session in March of last year, so it's been a while, and we've been busy, as Scott said. So I'm going to talk today about, a little bit about what is Plan Morro Bay to refresh everyone's memory, and for those who are listening and watching out there, give you an update on the project so far, what we have left to complete, and then talk about reviewing the public draft of the plan, which we expect to be out in the next month, as Scott mentioned. Next slide, please. Thanks. So Plan Morro Bay is an integrated document of your general plan and your local coastal program, and that does include your zoning in addition to your policy documents. And this satisfies both your statewide general plan requirement, as well as the Coastal Act and the Coastal Commission's requirements. We also prepared the downtown waterfront strategic plan as part of this project, and that has been adopted. That is a subarea of the overall planning area. As we've been working on the plan since the beginning of 2016, we've been following and using and sharing information and making sure we're consistent with what's going on on the water reclamation facility project, as well as the economic development strategic plan. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. So, as I said, the last time we were here before you was last March. So since then, we did work through land use alternatives for the plan. So this primarily focused on looking at areas in the city that we considered opportunity sites based on the public input and based on what we all know is going on in Morro Bay, and we received input on those sites. There are about 10 of them around the city, and those are the areas that are expected to change by 2040, perhaps. It's not a definite, but we have evaluated those areas, as well as the city as a whole, and come up with what is the preferred alternative, and that includes what you see on the proposed land use map that will be in the public draft of the plan. Near the beginning of 2017, the city received an additional grant from the Coastal Commission. So as most of you know, the plan was initially funded by two grants, one from the Ocean Protection Council and one from the Coastal Commission. And the Coastal Commission grant was the second round of LCP grants that they were providing to jurisdictions competing around the state. And the city was fortunate to receive a Round Three grant, and that funded some additional work that we've been working on. One of those tasks is a sea level rise adaptation plan. So this has been focusing on certain types of infrastructure and areas that need certain types of protection in the city. So the three locations that we're focused on in this study were Morro Rock and the area surrounding it, the Embarcadero, as well as a bridge on the north end of the city on Highway One, and the beach and the area surrounding it. That plan was reviewed by the G-PAC. It was also submitted to the Coastal Commission for their comments and has been completed. We are rolling forward the policy elements of that plan and the implementation elements of that plan in the draft of Plan Morro Bay. So that will be part of what you see in the relevant elements in the plan. Another one of the tasks was an evaluation of the environmentally sensitive habitat area in the city and an update to where that is. So we worked with Rincon Consultants to do that work, and that also includes some policy recommendations that are in Plan Morro Bay. Similarly, that was reviewed by the G-PAC, as well as the Coastal Commission. The third item in the grant is what we called the Low Cost Visitor Serving Accommodations Memo. And this took a deep look at the accommodations that exist in Morro Bay, both low cost and non-low cost. The thing that is of most interest to the Coastal Commission and why they provided the funding for this is whether there is sufficient lower cost accommodations, are sufficient lower cost accommodations in the city. And we were able to demonstrate that that is the case, and Coastal did take a look at that memo and provide some input, and we do have proposed policies and implementation in Plan Morro Bay. Next slide, please. The fourth task in the grant, or perhaps it's the fifth, is what we're calling the lateral access analysis. And this is something else that is of a lot of interest to Coastal Commission staff and the commissioners, and is something that hasn't been done in a lot of places in the state. So they were very interested in taking a look at whether there is sufficient connectivity for pedestrians and bicycles where possible along the coast laterally. So that would be roughly north to south in Morro Bay. And the area that we've been focusing on is the area that is the state Tidelands. So basically, from Morro Bay Oyster Company down to right by Tidelands Park. And we are still working through that analysis. It has been presented to the G-PAC, and it will be sent to the Coastal Commission for their input shortly. There is a second step in the ESHA analysis as part of this grant, and that is where we take the baseline report that has been prepared, and we look at how that interacts with the expected sea level rise impacts at the different timings, 2030, 2050, 2100, and then produce an additional GIS layer and some analysis of where ESHA is most vulnerable and how it is most vulnerable, and the types of communities that are likely to be more impacted by sea level rise through the end of this century. And that is, has been drafted and is in review right now. Finally, the last task, which is just beginning, is to update the sea level rise modeling. So there are new projections, and new information comes out pretty frequently on sea level rise. So we knew when we wrote this grant that there would be new projections coming out, and they were made available in March of this year. So our subconsultant Moffett and Nickel is starting on that task right now. So that is it for the Round Three grant. Thank you. We did prepare and submit the administrative draft of Plan Morro Bay to the Coastal Commission staff after city staff had reviewed it, and that happened in January of this year. We did receive their informal or preliminary comments in March, and as Scott mentioned, the next step will be to release the public draft for review by everyone. We hope that will be in the next month. Moving on to the next slide, I'll give you an update on the zoning code.
I'm just going to pause and make sure if there's any questions along the way from Council at this point. Ren?
You talked about the low-cost visitor-serving accommodation and that we've communicated with Coastal Commission staff. And did you say we received back from them guidelines? Have they actually told us what they want?
We did receive comments, and we also met with them. And we did receive pretty clear direction of what they thought was reasonable for Morro Bay. And we, the city and Michael Baker, communicated the city's perspective, and we so far have been able to agree on some proposed policy and implementation language that is going to be in the draft. And I don't know, Scott, if you want to respond as well.
I mean, the positive point of that is, I think the Council will recall, the issue we've had related to some of the projects that we've had down on the waterfront, right? Rosa's Landing and having affordable rooms. So we did the full analysis in our affordable accommodations policy to look at what affordable rooms look like, what the city's average daily rate looks like, and really to do the background, provide the background information to the Coastal Commission staff. Because we've told them for quite a while now that we don't have an affordability issue in the city with room rates, because we don't. But they're like, "Yeah, yeah, 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 yeah." And then we finally sort of did the math, if you will, and showed it to them, and they're like, "Oh, you don't." And so our policies moving forward that are going to be pushed out through the general plan and LCP really focus more on, hey, if our affordability starts to reduce beyond 25% of our rooms being at or below the average daily rate, then we need to start implementing policies to maintain that 25%, rate that's affordable. And so we've sort of changed the focus of the policy work that we're doing in the general plan and LCP as a result of doing the math and as a result of talking with Coastal staff, which is really, that was a direction given by the Council for us to go do that and have that conversation. So you'll actually be seeing that pushed out through the Plan Morro Bay.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to follow up on that. I know that when we reviewed some of the plans before, the requirement was that some percent of each hotel year had to have low-cost visitor-serving accommodations. And have you been able to persuade them that it's actually, in totality, the community as a whole has sufficient numbers?
But that seems to be where we're going, with the exception of the waterfront. They find the waterfront rooms to be different, and so we're still working kind of through what that looks like with them and having that conversation. That's an ongoing conversation, as we sit here. They say, "Yeah, you have affordable rooms, and you have them elsewhere, but rooms on the bay are unique, and you don't have those affordable, so we want a percentage of those potentially affordable." And so we've sort of been having that ongoing conversation with them moving forward.
But again, that would be a percentage of the total, not for each hotel year to have a certain number of...
Correct. And they're able to look at the ADR as it relates to those types of rooms and come back. And so as opposed to looking at those rooms and saying, "Oh, look at it citywide and say your room has to, two of your rooms on the waterfront have to rent for $100 a night," they're more like, "Oh, two of your rooms have to rent for $180 a night," or whatever that is, because the rooms are at, fill in the blank, 300 and something on average. So it's more along those lines. And so they've been more accepting of how that calculation happens in comparing like facilities to like facilities, as opposed to throwing them all into the basket and then sort of averaging out the costs from the one that's $65 a night to the one that's $400 a night that didn't require us to do that. You can look specifically at that, and that's kind of been what's happened most recently at Coastal, as, in fact, as the Rosa's Landing project made the way through Coastal Commission. So that was the last iteration that happened about a month and a half ago.
John? So, yeah, that's an interesting document. It's very comprehensive, and I think well done, although it's a little dated, and we don't have current data, but it's fairly recent data. And the document itself contains a number of policy recommendations that come from, I guess, the consultant, and in addition, in vetting out what's going on with Coastal, what these considerations might be. My question is, for those kinds of things, I know they end up going to G-PAC, and that might be the place for public comment or input, but where else do we go to get broader community input? Because in reading that document, which is very comprehensive, it's a lot to take in, how do we get further public awareness of important issues like that that I think people may not understand, fall within the context of something called an LC-VSA, but they have concerns about, let's say, vacation rentals or those kinds of things? So what's the process for moving those high-level initiatives?
I mean, it's not the city's hiding the ball on this. We've been going through this update process for over two years. We've had almost 40 public meetings on it, maybe more than 40, actually, if I count workshops. So to some extent, if people are interested in the process, they need to engage with us. I mean, we have public meetings, we're regularly having them, they're scheduled once a month, sometimes twice for G-PAC if we go over special items. And then we're reviewing them at Planning Commission as well, and then we've had several meetings with Council involved also. So I think, I don't know, we need to do much beyond that. We need to get, the citizenry needs to want to be engaged. We've sent out notices and flyers when we started the process, we sent them out to everybody in water bills and those types of things. And we could continue to do those types of things, just to remind them that everybody that this is going on, but it's been an ongoing process for well over two years now. And most of the folks that we get input from are aware that we're going through the process. They just might not stay engaged throughout the entirety of it until they hear issues that come up. It's been my sort of experience moving this part in the process.
If I could just add, you know, it really, it's when it comes down to the specifics that it's going to really matter to the citizens. You know, the general, let's talk about the vision for the city, that's pretty big picture. And so it really, it's the specifics that we need to make sure that they have an opportunity to comment on.
And one of the things I've been thinking about internally for a while now is sending out another one of those, because we have the documents moving through the process now, is sending it out through the water bill so they go out to everybody and to let everybody know, like, hey, now we're actually reviewing the policy documents themselves. And so that was sort of something that's kind of been kicking around internally as an update. We do post them on the city's website and on Facebook and put it under Hot Topics and all those types of things, but the water bill idea has been one that I, since we started posting actual document language for the modules of the zoning code and that type of thing, it might be good to point people at them as well.
And Scott, I'll just, you know, I'll give you kudos for the number of meetings that you guys have had. I know that 40-plus meetings or what have you, there have been significant. From what I get feedback from the community is, it might be language in terms of understanding something that is communicated and what it really means and what the content of it is, like, you know, LC-VSA, that's common language for you and maybe becoming more common language for me, but not so much for the public. And also, social media is great, but in Morro Bay, it's not 100% of everybody. And I think the idea of the water bills and getting specifics about what's going to be discussed in there is a great idea, because it's going out anyway, no increased cost. And there's some important areas coming up. We're getting down to policy decisions, and it would be great to make sure people are notified, maybe in that fashion, in addition to all the meetings you're having and the other ways.
It's a good idea and a fair point. Like I said, it's one of the things I've been kind of kicking around since we're starting to release documents now, as opposed to all the background material. I mean, the background material takes up several thousand pages. And honestly, if you're a regular resident, you open up some of those background documents, baseline assessment, things like that, and you look into them, there might be things in there that you're interested in, but it's a big document and just kind of unwieldy to wade through for, I think, the general public. But people understand that, I think, in general anyway, what zoning codes are, and we're coming out with pieces of that right now. And so that would be good for them to at least know, like, hey, some of the zoning code pieces are out, you want to take a look at, you know, is your property zoning changing? Well, the names of them are going to change. That might be interesting to people, I don't know.
Okay, thanks. If you can continue on, thank you.
Okay, so speaking of the zoning code, we have been working through the modules, we're calling them, so the sections of the zoning code with the G-PAC, getting their input. So the first module was the administrative provisions, and this includes things like permits and procedures and other things that have to do with how the zoning code applies and is administered. And that was reviewed last August by the G-PAC and also reviewed by the Planning Commission in September. The next module that's part of this whole administrative draft is Module Two, and that included interpretation, the development standards, so setbacks, heights, et cetera, for each of the zoning districts, as well as some other general regulations and definitions. That was reviewed by G-PAC in December and the Planning Commission in February. It is going to go back to the Planning Commission next month on the 15th to talk a little more about the proposed 37-foot height in some of the downtown. The most recent module, Module Three, which is the allowed uses, the use regulations, that was reviewed last week by the G-PAC and also will be on the agenda at the Planning Commission on May 15th. There will be one additional module after that, and that will be everything that's left, which is generally the zoning regulations that apply citywide. After that module has been reviewed by the G-PAC and the Planning Commission, then all of the revisions that are needed will be made, and a full, comprehensive draft will be released. So next slide. So this is the timeline of basically what we have left. We are hoping to complete the entire project in September. As we mentioned, the draft of the plan will be coming out shortly. That will be followed pretty quickly by a public draft of the zoning, and then the administrative, and then public drafts of the environmental impact report will follow, and that will cover both of those documents, otherwise known as Plan Morro Bay. We're going to talk some more on the final slides and in the discussion about how we interact with you and other decision-makers to review all of this. But we will eventually get to public hearings, and that is expected to happen in late summer, and then have final documents, August, September timeframe. So that gives you a little bit of a visual on that. Finally...
I have a question at this point. Thanks. First of all, this is a great outline, and you might get to this. So maybe based on the timeline slide, maybe I'm jumping ahead of where you might be, but it's great to have this overview to understand what the timeline is and what the milestones will be. And Scott, you and I had some conversations on how we get to September, considering all the documents and review that is going through the process, both from a G-PAC, Planning Commission, and then the City Council. And pardon me, and some of those had to do with reviewing a huge document and all the policies in there. So this is really an opportunity for Council to talk about that and understand that, based on this timeline and milestones, we're either going to be reviewing an entire draft zoning code up to date, LCP general plan update, or we can have some discussion, can we take small bites through of all those up to the date we need to approve it? And that's kind of a challenging point as well, because there's so much on our agenda overall as a Council every single meeting, but I just wanted to lay that out for Council, as well as some of the thoughts when we go through this for a discussion. That's, I just, those are the only comments I had. Thanks.
So that's pretty much the rest of what I was going to say. You said it probably better than I can. The final slide is really just that, yeah, the timeframe that we are working with is putting out the public draft and then going through that review process between the spring and early to midsummer. Of course, we do have a little more time after that, but the goal would be to get at least your first reaction by the middle of the summer, so that we can revise and make sure that everything is looking the way that everyone wants it to look.
So that would mean, pardon me, so that would mean our Council's initial reaction in totality, pardon me, of the general plan LCP update and the zoning update, is that correct?
I think we're hoping to get into hearings in July, yeah.
Okay. And so the process, pardon me for kind of getting through some of the more questions in here. So the public hearing portion is going to vet all the documents, and is it important whether or not the Council is, where we are on, whether it's the public giving that information and Council following that or before, is there any...
I'll let Scott respond as well, but my opinion is that we will probably need to have more than just the official public hearings to digest all of this information and talk about it. So probably this format for some of the meetings, but we're looking for your thoughts as well.
Would it be realistic to say that if we had a 4:00 study session, we could get through a couple of modules, and then, you know, another two-hour study session, get through? I mean, I don't, you know, I'm trying to talk through that both with Council and staff, and then we have to figure out on the calendar how, you know, how much time we have to be able to do that, considering we have other special meetings and things like that.
The conversation that you and I had earlier was just to that point, is when are we going to have these meetings, and how many of these can the Council reasonably expect to get through? And so I think your point in maybe us breaking it down and being able to look at portions of it together, that could work. Portions of like the zoning code, look at the first two modules, and then the second two modules on a different meeting, that might be reasonable enough to get through the zoning code portion after we've assembled it all and made all the changes to it. That's something that could probably happen. And then we have to kind of take a look at the whole Plan Morro Bay. I mean, that's a much bigger document when we're done. I mean, it's several, it'll be several hundred pages when we're done with it, and so that might be a little different process. And so now you'd be adding, so there's two meetings, at least we just put on there, and now Plan Morro Bay, to try to do that in two or three, then you'd be, if it was three, then you'd be adding five meetings. That could be prior to City Council meetings, but it makes the day long. I mean, we're here now, and we'll be here well into the evening tonight. So some consideration probably needs to be given to, you know, what is the ability of the Council to do all that, keeping in mind that we have a water reclamation facility that often has extra things associated with it and longer meetings.
Yeah. And, you know, the option to, I know we've had, we'll be doing a forum tomorrow, which actually works pretty well, not having a 4:00 start and a late start. I think Councilmember Davis brought to my attention the timeline for our evening, and so, you know, Wednesdays, I suppose, might be an option to have some of those study sessions, if, you know, the rest of Council would make some comment on that. I was just, I think this was just a great opportunity for us to understand the scope and magnitude and volume of what we need to get through and how we can get through it to a point where, when September comes, I guess the expectation is that we have whittled through this in bite size to where maybe in one or two meetings we could adopt it instead of going through our initial meeting and thinking we're going to get through all the volumes all at once. And I think that's some of the comments I just wanted to prompt for Council. And I know Matt's got some comments, so maybe I'll turn to Matt.
No, this discussion, I totally understand what you guys are talking about in terms of looking at our agenda going ahead in this next chronological 12 months. But one thing I'd like to put into the mix in terms of the times and the number of meetings, we also have to consider people with different schedules. And I know you were leading up to that, and I'm not just talking about Council people, just talking about people who can't, I mean, staying late. We have folks that, you know, staying up till, you know, 10, 11 o'clock for a meeting is hard. We're on people coming in early meetings on a weekday, so I would like to put in to make a suggestion perhaps for a weekend meeting, middle-of-the-day meeting perhaps on a weekend. And we can alternate that somehow, because the Wednesday night, hopefully that's going to work tomorrow night for such a meeting, but if we can not necessarily stagger, but then alternate the times throughout this process.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just have a question. What is the significance of the... I just have a question. What is the significance of the September deadline? Is that an absolute drop deadline that somebody has set?
We set that by resolution. The council did.
And we would have to change it by resolution?
Yes. Yeah. And the other deadline, I think, Scott, you can speak to, is the having it done for December. And is there a specific date for December?
So as most of you are probably aware, about half of this effort is grant-funded, and our grant deliverables are due in December.
December what?
The end of December.
End of December. Okay.
So we're only going to have one meeting, I think, in December. So it would be, that first meeting in December would be when you'd have to have it all done by at the latest date. Otherwise, we jeopardize the funding, and I don't know that we want to be paying back to Coastal Commissioner or the Ocean Protection Council the $600,000 in grant funding that we received.
Yeah. And Matt, I appreciate the comments and thoughtfulness on that. And I was thinking, considering, and I would ask for some comments from staff on this, the overall timeline for council study session is for council to get through these, because we have kind of a parallel path that the entire document is going through with Planning Commission and whatnot. And that's in addition, another public format to do that. So, you know, primarily it's a council study session to get through all these. So I think I would want to be focusing on, you know, for council to be able to get through all those as well.
Yeah, I totally agree, and I see your point. But one thing that comes to mind right there, because that's a very good point, Jamie, in terms of what council, City Council has to do and what planning has to do. But throughout that, perhaps maybe we could spread the scheduling fairly among those different bodies, just because, you know, we want to make this as robust and open of a process for planning, for City Council, but also for our public. And I agree, when we do this with our different bodies, the public will be able to come and speak to us. But perhaps we can work with the scheduling. That's the only thing I would suggest.
Okay. Any other, John?
Yeah. So perhaps if you begin to look at the documents, I just double-checked my pagination, and just one document, which is, just happened to be talking about, the draft, I just lost it, sorry, the draft, Low-Cost Visitor Serving Accommodations Reports, 53 pages. And so the way I think about it is, I don't need a full presentation from staff on that. I can read it and have read it, and I get it. I see the policy issues. And if we somehow could get a listing of the modules that we need to review, schedule one, two, or three meetings, whatever, to consider those modules with the salient questions proposed by staff, after it's been vetted by the public, you're going through the public process right now and getting input, we could weigh in by reading all of this at home, not having to go through a full presentation, which takes a lot of time, and then just dealing with the bottom-line questions and issues of policy that we're responsible for. That may well limit the amount of time that we have to spend here reviewing it. It's so important that I don't want to lose sight of being able to do it, but at the same time, I'm more than willing to, out of here and away from meetings, do my homework, come prepared, and just deal with the questions that have to be answered from a policy standpoint.
Great comments.
Yeah, I was thinking, oh, excuse me.
Red?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that the December meeting is going to be the sub...
So changing of the guard?
Yes. And asking two new council members to pass the GP might not be a great thing to do.
I think Ken's the reason we've been focusing on an early timeline, giving a little bit of a buffer in case it bleeds over. But you don't get a whole lot of time. So that's a very salient point, and I think one that we've been tracking this entire process, which is why we set the deadline where we set it. So realizing it's a big undertaking, and we can have all the good intentions in the world, but you can anticipate what you don't know is out there, or what issue might come up, and it might make us spill over a little bit further. But having that gap and that buffer, you know, allows us the ability to get through with the council that we have that's here versus, you know, when we change over potentially, you know, in November.
Yeah. Would you assume, given that format that I described, you know, we're doing our homework prior to getting here and really dealing with the key issues of policy, would you assume possibly that three, four-hour sessions could accomplish that kind of interactive review?
So when you get it, this process is very iterative, right? You know, it's kind of a feedback loop that we do with the G-PAC and the Planning Commission. We go through G-PAC, we go to Planning Commission, we kind of finish, a great example is for the zoning code piece of it. We get the modules out of that, we come back and we go, okay, this one's good. And we go through that process again, we go, okay, this one's good. And then we're going to have four of them and do that process four times. And then we're going to assemble the whole thing, and then we're going to go back to G-PAC and go, okay, here's all the changes we made, here's the changes that came from Planning Commission, here's the changes that came from you, and here's what the final document looks like. Everybody weigh in, and then we'll make whatever changes need to happen. And then we go to the Planning Commission at the next stage and go, here you go, this is where we're at. And they'll have an option at that point to make the recommendation to council, because they're required to. The Planning Commission is required to recommend approval of all the zoning code changes and all the general plan changes to council. And so we would be taking it to them and getting the recommendation, at which point we'd be moving it forward with the document and going, all right, council, here you go. And hopefully, you know, with enough lead time, so we could have some of those meetings on the finalized document. Because, and my point being there is, you'll have something that's been recommended for approval by your Planning Commission. So you have a finalized document that hopefully is most of the way there, short of, you know, whatever issues may come out of that. I mean, certainly the Planning Commission may make recommendations that certain factions of the public aren't happy with, and then the council will have to weigh in because that's your job. And so I would see it sort of doing like that. Otherwise, I wouldn't want to have the council reviewing pieces that weren't kind of totally baked, because I'm crossing in the night, that seems kind of nightmarish to me.
Yeah. And I agree with that, but I'm assuming the totally baked ones that are really coming out of the oven, so to speak, if they're out of the oven and ready to be reviewed or eaten, could those be reviewed and eaten in, let's say, three, four-hour meetings possibly, or four, four-hour meetings that could be scheduled? I'm just trying to understand.
I do think internally, we can work on what that would look like, yes. And look at the calendar.
I'm just trying to get an idea of the magnitude and the number of meetings that we have too and are scheduled. I want to give it an appropriate review after it's had an appropriate review by not only the community, but all of those other entities that each one has to go back and forth with. And I know it's a tremendous amount of coordination on your part and your staff's part and your consultants' part, because you're trying to juggle all of those entities. So if I could understand the magnitude of the review that I have to do and how much I can do outside of here, then I could commit to how much time it takes to eat the baked goods.
Which is why we're having this discussion tonight. Yeah, good. Marlo, did you have some comments?
Well, I was just going to say that I agree with John, that I would really like to focus on the controversial issues, the ones that the public is most concerned about. I'd like to know exactly what those are ahead of time, because I don't want us to sit here and argue about language and minor details and that sort of thing. So I would really like to focus on the critical issues and have some understanding of what they are ahead of time and carve out enough time for us to discuss those. I also wanted to ask if it was possible for, like, G-PAC and the Planning Commission to meet jointly, recognizing that the Planning Commission makes a recommendation and G-PAC can only give input. But I'm just wondering if we could shorten the process a little bit with joint meetings, and you can answer if that's possible.
We'd have to look at the calendar. The G-PAC, we meet typically once monthly, with the ability to meet more than that if we need to, and they're all more than accommodating. So to move schedules around to match up with Planning Commission doesn't seem to be an issue if we need to do it. Certainly, if we were running out of time, that's what we would be doing. Just haven't looked at the calendar, looked at that option.
Well, it would allow the public one opportunity to come as opposed to twice if they were concerned about an issue. And it just would seem to make sense, since we're right down to the wire here, and time is of the essence. So I've made sense.
It is an interesting, I mean, I, you know, having sat through several G-PAC meetings and several Planning Commission meetings on the various subjects at hand.
Thank you.
Yeah. They have different, very different takes on, you know, I think the G-PAC tends to be concerned with larger citywide issues. And then you have the Planning Commission who's more policy-oriented, and so takes a look at those issues and say, okay, does the policy that we're coming up with address the issues? And they tend to do a much deeper dive, you know, in my experience with, you know, the two bodies. I think the G-PAC brings a much broader range, because they, you know, canvas out in their groups and talk to their friends and bring those ideas and concepts and issues and questions in that way, which is what they're supposed to be doing. And they do a fairly good job of that. So they're two different bodies. They could meet together. I found the process, having them meet separately, to be better for the overall products that we produce. You know, I like where we're at right now. I like what we're getting out of that process. So I might be a little reticent to go down that road unless we were really actually running out of time, at which point probably wouldn't have a choice. So...
Any other comments? So I guess the takeaway from tonight, which was the purpose of being able to identify our meal menu, is that, would that be a good analogy, John? Meal menu? Basically, baked goods, how we can get through all that. So would you be able to maybe provide us some sort of update on potential schedules with all that?
We'll sit down with the city manager and our team and look through what that looks like and what our specific, look at specific meeting dates, when things are going to fall and when we're going to be done. And then we'll come back to you with something that, you know, that works within the schedule that you have, and keeping in mind all the other extra meetings that you tend to have. So, yeah, we'll bring back something that addresses that, at least gives you a couple of opportunities to review both Plan More Obey and the zoning code.
Okay, great. Thanks. Is there any other comments from council? I think we, do we have it all wrapped up then?
I think we have clear direction from the council. What you want us to bring back? I'm pretty clear.
Well, yeah, thank you for this. I think it was really important for us to have the snapshot, so we know what we're up against. And this truly does that for us. So now we need to see what the menu's going to look like over the next couple of months. And so we'll have to start working on our appetite.
Okay.
Okay. I guess with that, if there's no more comments, we can adjourn this meeting, and then we can have a break and come back at 6 o'clock for City Council. Any other? No? Okay, adjourned. Thank you.